I'm just gonna read my statement. I had a concern I wanted to bring to your attention regarding the dock space rental policy. As I understand it, people are currently able to rent dock spaces even if they don't place a boat there. I've noticed that it sometimes leaves spots sitting empty throughout the season. There were as many as 12 empty spaces this season. One in particular has been vacant for six years. This particular spot, because being a well-known empty space on the dock, has been used by a boat since June 2nd, and it is still sitting in that space. And I'm sure this person will continue using this free space next year, since the dock space renter has no intention of buying a new boat. It feels like a bit of a missed opportunity, especially since there are many boaters who would make good use of those spaces. I wondered if the board might consider looking at ways to encourage active use of rented spaces so that the waterfront can be enjoyed as fully as possible. I have had a village dock space for several years. I would love to be able to get a deeper water space for my pontoon, but with no one giving up their spaces each year, it seems impossible. When we had a dock in Springfield Landing, they had a requirement that if you didn't put your boat in the water by June 20th, you lost your space. It would be wonderful if the village could actively try and have actual boaters renting these spaces. Also, there are at least two dock spaces with people who have rented them, but have their own docks on the lake. They rent these spaces just so that they can use them as parking spaces when they come into the village, even though there are four 24-hour free spaces available. And I've been told that four of the spaces, these four spaces on the dock, are used by rental boat companies for their rental boats so that they can make money, which is another thing that is not allowed in Springfield. Since there are so few spaces and so many people waiting for a dock space, this all seems unfair. Finally, there are several pontoons on the east side of the docks that are over, that are 22 feet and over, even though the regulations are that, are to be, that they're supposed to be on the west side of Dock 1 only. Since the board has not felt the need to order these existing boats to move, then maybe the current policy is not necessary, and it never was an issue that needed to be addressed. It might open up more dock spaces for 22-foot pontoons. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. You know, the members would like to ask questions.
Would you mind repeating that in some of the other parts?
Oh, absolutely.
And if you have details of bigger dock space numbers, please.
Add them to that.
We want your impression of what's happening to someone you can analyze.
Okay, I will. Thank you. And what, after I tweeted, you want me to just bring it to? Just bring it.
Or, or email it.
You can email it to the Village Board. Yeah. We don't always comment. This is the opportunity for the public. But just so you know, we have heard complaints this summer. We have taken action on a few boats that didn't provide their proper registration materials. And in January, before the renewal letter goes out, that all those who have dock spaces are sent, there'll be certain individuals that won't get a renewal letter. So we do recognize the concerns. There will also be an increase in rates because we are definitely the cheapest game in town, and as a result, a little bit oversubscribed in some ways. And I know that's frustrating for village residents, but unfortunately, New York State funds, taxpayer grant funds, were utilized in that park. And we cannot say they're only for village residents or anything like that. Okay. Thank you for sharing your comments. And we will, as I say, in January, we've been accumulating these concerns and we'll be addressing them. Are there any other public comments? Yes. I'm sorry. We asked that you say your name and your residence.
Hi, Sharon Dominique, right here in Cooperstown. I'm just wondering if there's plans to pave Susquehanna Ave and do the sidewalks along, all along the route from there to the school. The roads are a mess. The sidewalks are a mess. I know Main Street's usually paved every year, every other year. I just want to see the rest of the village taken care of.
Susquehanna Ave?
Between, excuse me, between Beaver and Elm, mostly. That's where we are.
I will, I will take it to the Streets Committee. We have not filled out our five-year plan for the next five years. I don't recall Susquehanna being on that list, but I appreciate you bringing it to our attention because that's how things get on the list.
I have called Mr. Huddling.
Huddling?
Oh, Huddling, thank you, a couple times last year. But I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other public comments to be made? Opportunity? If not, I'm going to close the public comment section of the meeting, and we'll move on to our agenda. The first order is correspondence. There was some in your original packet? No, there was none in your original packet, but we have a lot. And I'm going to try and incorporate, because we had certain committees meet earlier this month. We've got two very equally thick packets, so I'm going to be referring to the correspondence on your additional agenda item. We have an email from Rena Lull thanking the board for approving Resolution Number 4 of 2025 regarding the federal government's policies on immigrant seizure, detention, and deportation. I think that was, there was one other letter that we are going to handle in Water and Sewer. All right. So moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. Review of minutes for August 25th, 2025, our regular meeting. I move that the minutes be approved with corrections submitted. I know Cindy and I put in corrections. Did anyone else have anything jump out?
Nope. I don't know what your corrections were. I'm sorry. But Lynn Mabus mentioned that the person taken in ICE custody was in Louisiana. I thought they were in Texas. Are they in Louisiana? I believe that's. It was? Okay. Then I did not remember correctly.
Did you have another?
No.
All right. Was there a second to that motion? Is that Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
Permits that were not on the original agenda and numerous, and they begin at number five. Admin permit number 21 of 2025, application to use village streets property bass fishing tournament by adding essentially a day, October 5th, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by, made by George, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is number six on the additional agenda. An application to use the Village Park David Turner Leather Stocking Dive Club and Atsiko Lake Association Volunteer Divers to use Three Mile Park on October 4th, 2025, from 2:00 PM until 6:30 PM for an underwater pumping carving contest, which is gonna be interesting for spectators. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to discuss it in a second.
Sure. Okay. Motion seconded by Audrey. And go ahead.
Well, so what about safety monitoring? We, how, we have disclaimers of liability. How, how? It seems like it's a great idea, but also it's using our swimming areas. One of that too long after our parks are closed.
So for instance, do they need to have lifeguards? Is that the type of thing that you're saying?
They represent to us if they have them. How effective a disclaimer of liability can we get? If something goes wrong, that's my only concern.
Is there, I know Jenna, you were away. A lot of this is.
Sky dollar outfit are concerns.
Yeah, because, right. You know, we do ask for a certificate of liability insurance, and you can see for like the Bass Association, we get information on that. This is like blank.
David Turner has one. He's the school instructor. He provided his insurance. So that's what he provided.
I, what am I, I'm sorry, looking at this one?
It's the third page as part of his application. Fourth page, David Turner, it says right now, right in the summary, that the school instructor will provide insurance for the accident.
Okay. I was looking at the actual certificate, and it wasn't completed. That was what I was reading.
It doesn't name the village of Cooperstown.
It doesn't name the village of Cooperstown as an additional insured. We don't see, you know, for instance, the Bass Tournament, they have each occurrence, 1 million, damage to rented premises, 50,000. None of these coverages are at all indicated on that certificate of liability insurance. It really gives us no information.
Yeah, they did know also that all divers are completely away or excluded from the village.
Well, I, I'd recommend we approve this subject to.
All the documentation and certifications coming in? All right. So our concerns are the insurance, what were some of the others? Just so Jenna can be sure to address them.
That's all.
Okay. I thought there was.
Well, if, if the, if the divers are providing like a hold harmless agreement, I think we should have our village attorney review the hold harmless to ensure that it meets our needs as well as the instructor's needs.
Right. So I would have thought it would be our insurer and our treaty. Those papers.
Yeah. If he could get it here tomorrow. Yeah. Yep. Perfect. Thank you, Jenna. So the motion was made seconded with those kind of caveats. All in favor?
Aye.
So that one. We have number seven, application to use village property Village Ballroom from Jennifer Armstrong Atsiko 2000 Glimmer Glass Film Days on November 14th through 16th, 2025, from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulation that the applicant is informed that the stairs to the ballroom will be, there will be work done on those stairs the week previous. And I think they just need to be aware that that work is going on. They're not going to be able to get in there early to do setup the week before. It should be done by the 14th to the 16th, but it's not going to be done on the 10th.
Was, so is there clarification on the dates when that contractor will be on site? Just so.
He begins on the 6th and will be there for a week.
6th through 12th is what you're saying?
Yep.
That's cutting it close.
Okay. All right. So with that caveat, Cindy has made the motion. It's been seconded by Audrey. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight on your additional agenda, application to use village property Village Ballroom from Martha Membrino, League of Women Boaters of the Cooperstown Area for a book talk with Lindsay Cormac on Thursday, November 6th, from 4:30 until 7:00.
So Cindy, definitely very alerting me to this. When I checked on this application, said to make sure it had been filed, but what happened was it was filed, but it wasn't agendized, and so it was not noted. As I understand it, Cindy can explain more when the committees committee finally moved a contractor to do the floor. So we thought, I should say, we, I don't know what we can do about this if contractors coming in. But last year, just for the record, we had the same author come and speak, and the venue was changed at the last minute because of the Arts Association shifted over to the school auditorium, and about five people showed up because everybody kind of bumped their head against the, noses against the library doors, and nothing was going on here. So that's kind of the fiasco. We have more time to think about other accommodation. And one thought came to me is the use of the gallery, lower gallery. I think there's an art exhibit in October, but not in November. And if you want, Cindy also has a non-village associated program. Maybe we could set up that room with chairs and so forth before the work starts so that that space is available for meetings. There is an audiovisual component to it because we don't have a screen in there, but we have white walls and if the AB can be moved in there, we might be able to at least have the activities on this, or the events on these premises.
So we have confirmed that the gallery does not have any sort of sculpture, artwork, or anything. The whole space would be available?
That is, I cannot say that. I can only say that when I looked at the building committee meetings, there was a note that the art exhibits were going to be in October.
I think that referred to upstairs. I don't think that refers to downstairs.
So there'll still be art downstairs?
I think you think it referenced the ballroom and not the other.
Yeah.
Are you texting um Janet or?
I can. I was just looking at their at their website to see if it.
What shows they have up?
Yes.
Well, let's pause on that and come back to it in case we get a response about.
Yeah, I mean, I I will say that the the stair work was scheduled on August thirteenth. So it it is not a new
Right.
surprising thing.
What wasn't, that stair wasn't communicated to the calendar um in the office.
Yeah.
And so when the calendar in the office was checked, that date was available. So that's so there's and and that may be an example of a larger scheduling protocol we need to figure out because
Yeah.
there's something violated on first of the month, no, twenty-sixth of the month. And if that isn't at least booked in the in the scheduling book isn't referred to, then there can be inadvertent double booking.
So I'm sure they looked and saw that the ballroom wasn't in use that day, but unaware of the um side or the stair
Yeah.
um words. Yeah. So we'll come back to that. Um, application to use village property, Village Meeting Room, Fair Street Sidewalk for the following dates and times, eleven eighteen from nine A M. until one for book collection. Winter book sale on February fourth, two thousand twenty-six to February eighth, two thousand twenty-six, as well as June eleventh, um, two thousand twenty-six for Fair Street Sidewalks, tent setup with June thirteenth, book collection and summer book sale from June twentieth through June twenty-eight. I move that we approve that, seconded by Audrey. All in favor?
Aye.
That was really kind of our letters. Um, there was a letter from Carol and the Waller, which we will handle underwater and sewer. All right. Moving on, and we'll come back if you to that.
Yep.
Forget it.
Yep.
Um we have on the additional agenda, the C E O's report. I will point out that the minutes of um the three boards was uh sent digitally to all the trustees to review in advance. And um the there is one action sort of notification for us, and that pertains to the notice of the County Planning Department's recommendations for the zoning change for fifteen Chestnut Street. And that is on your original agenda. So hopefully you all saw that. Um.
Oh, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I will make a motion based on the County Planning Department's recommendations, as well as the recommendations of the Village of Cooperstown Planning Board to set a public hearing for a zoning change at fifteen Chestnut Street for the next regularly scheduled trustees meeting.
The October one you seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
And I have one more because the planning board also made a recommendation concerning the special use permit for twenty-six Walnut Street.
Mm hmm.
So I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for a special use permit for a four-unit um apartment at twenty-six Walnut Street for the next regularly scheduled trustees meeting.
Motion made, seconded by, um, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
If there's no other questions or comment, um, motion to accept zoning officials' report by George, seconded by Audrey, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public safety. Again, you will find in your um additional, you have minutes in um both your original and your um the fire EMS or in your additional. George?
Uh, well, it looks like we're going to be addressing a new part-time police officer uh later on in the meeting uh, which is a good thing. We will be losing our chief shortly. And that's gonna result in uh a new chief and and moving along with the, you know, with those uh changes. We, there's also a good possibility one of our our full-time officers may be retiring. That word is filtered up to you that.
I think we're going to be discussing um um the police department under personnel in uh executive session.
Okay. All right. Other than that, really, it's really uh in a quiet, you know, quiet period, quiet period of time. Nothing really, nothing really extraordinary.
Is there any questions or comments on the police?
Yeah, I was just interested in hearing a little bit more about the camera. We we got a grant for camera purchases, and some of them were installed and operating. I'm just wondering how they're being. We we have one at the uh the facility on Linden, okay, because there were problems, appear to be problems with people dump, commercial dumping that location. So that's there. There's a second one on top of the old restroom at Badger Park. And again, that was put there because we had a series of events there where uh we presumed to be young people damaging, you know, damaging the bathroom there. So that's serving, you know, a more thorough police check. You know, we're not just checking with controls. We have that. Uh, if uh that more damage were to occur, we can look at videotape to see what to to see who wouldn't want that going and who might be responsible, and how we can pursue restoration if that's that seems to be an option. It's a good practice. And so the these cameras are recording, and they're monitored occasionally or when is there a protocol? We have the ability to monitor, but we don't, we certainly don't have somebody, you know, watching, you know, watching the screen. No, no. Subsequent. Reviewing the tape. Sub subsequent, subsequent to an event? Or, yeah, whatever triggers review of Right, yeah, absolutely. and their maintenance. Be part of a, part of a criminal investigation.
Can I just ask? Um, it says we got four, one at Lakefront to do the dock area, one at Badger Park or no?
That's bad.
Yes. And then I thought you also mentioned the Linden Ave one. So that's three.
The I can tell you where the fourth is. The fourth.
Right, but then it says, and then two were put up for Labor Day events. So I was just wondering the, yes, how it all occurred. It sounds like three have been positioned and one is available. Okay. Yeah.
The the fourth is at the Baptist Church at the request of our pastor, who uh confronted three individuals stealing items from the clothing shed behind the church and
Again.
and asked stealing, stealing from the clothing shed behind the church and asked the police if they could monitor that because yeah.
This has occurred in the past.
It has. And now there was, now there has been a personal confrontation between the people
Yeah.
who allegedly are stealing and the pastor.
All right. Uh, any other questions on the police component on report of the um public safety? I was wondering, you've got uh on here, there's a need to declare car two oh one as surplus. Are we doing that tonight?
On the agenda.
Uh, on the
Two thousand eighteen towards the workplace.
Under finance or?
Yeah, it's under finance.
Okay, all right. On the additional agenda. Okay, thank you. And now um fire EMS?
We met the other day, and uh we actually had a what I thought to be a a very good, very informative meeting. I created a bit of a packet for the for the board members here, which includes a table of organization and phone numbers of the staff there. They've also taken to providing us with a detailed summary of the prior fire responses for the reporting period, which again is part of this packet. And basically reflects what the EMS section has been doing for a while. So we we can look at things a little more closely. Look at the number, the number. Staffing, staffing is a bit of a problem. They're looking at a couple of avenues where they might be able to uh recruit more additional uh people of both services, both EMS and uh fire there. Big issue, the big issue, I think, that we're facing, however, is the equipment issue. Yeah, number apparatus that are reaching the end of their useful life. And again, this packet has a full list of each of each of the vehicles uh that the fire EMS section has, including a date of purchase. And like, so that's approved. Uh, proved very hard on the station about possibly placement.
And I asked where the, you said you submitted the packet to the board. Did I miss it?
No, I I don't think I. Sure.
Oh.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Here.
Move around. And Jenna, did you get this one? No. So make sure that goes around to Jenna and stuff.
Also included with that is a map of the coverage area to end. So surprised, I think, for both of us.
Certainly.
How much, how much geography?
Wow.
Yeah.
responsible for it. So again, I include that. May I um ask a question? I I'm looking at the uh league page and the um anticipated replacement cost. I think as we consider budget to reserves and those kinds of financial matters. Again, to come back to the question of the resources that are separately held by EMS and the department, because I, these numbers are huge.
Mm hmm.
Um, we have, we always seem to have been understandably recruit grants and loans and so forth. Friends, we can't blame, in addition to going into twenty, we can leave. But I think to me, looking at this, you can briefly understand the need to have a fuller understanding of the financial situation with those entities and their ability to contribute to the purchases.
Um, just so everyone knows, you've got uh essentially the chart. The reason that, for instance, one um wasn't replaced in two thousand sixteen, the nineteen ninety-five vehicle. It's because um the department came very focused on replacing the aerial, which, as you know, kind of arrived after a budget had been created and fortunately was funded largely um by a generous benefactor. The only um cost to the village was half a million for that vehicle. Um, but that's one reason that was not addressed. We do attempt to put money in reserves. And actually, we have about eight hundred and fifty thousand in reserves. That's a ballpark. I don't have the exact right in front of me. And uh what we have tended to do is budget within a annual budget. So if a vehicle is, you know, say, seven hundred thousand, we might pull three hundred and then budget for vice versa. So that will all be discussed and reviewed at our um budget meetings that commence in February.
The other thing, the other thing that they mentioned uh is really a fairly wide of their shoes. They continue to have some problems with the garage doors there. We need some maintenance there. We could reach out to the manager, see if we could do some in-house maintenance there rather than contract for services. I don't know whether that that contact has been made yet.
Are any questions on public safety? Motion to accept a public safety report?
We move to accept it.
Um, Audrey seconded by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, other committee reports, double day advice?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I I, this is hard to read, this first uh organization chart, but I'm seeing, if I'm reading it correctly, that the I don't understand the entities. I I count to at least maybe three entities here, the the fire chain of command, the fire police chain of command, and the emergency squad chain of command. In these, in this organization chart, where which entity is which? I'd like to understand which is a, which is all fire, which is all EMS, getting back to understanding funding and the ability to and the authority to maintain separate funds. This, everything looks command here. So um I'm trying to understand what the what the entities are that maintain separate accounts.
I think the only two are fire, are EMS.
Right. And and so the this really is a challenge for me because the title of this is a Cooperstown Fire Department. So one entity. And the way this organization chart works, it all ends up being under one authority, or one administrative authority.
That's correct.
So
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand how that can be, while at the same time, there's an independent, separate legal status, at least for the purposes of finances between EMS and the fire department. I just, it it seems to me that that intuitively, this should all be in a combined, as as it as it's looks like.
Members of EMS have to be members of fire department, so I recall. And but then they can branch out and be focused on EMS.
No, I understand the specialization. I I get all that. But in terms of the entity and the separate.
The five oh one C three staff?
Not even the five oh one C three. There there's, well, I guess their status because they could receive funds. I'm 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 having trouble understanding how there can be these separate entities under one fire department that have accounts that we can't.
Well, do not hurt the village.
I understand that, but the question is should that be the case? And can we do something about getting a better handle on these?
You can do it if you want to do a paid department.
Hmm.
Then you have employees volunteers. How that whole section of the law works is that we own the equipment, we own the structure, we own the building. And then we allow, that's why we have to, if you remember a few meetings ago, there was a question about certifying the election. Because we own all the equipment and the building in which they operate, we have authority to decide who we want operating vehicles in the light. So we certify the election in the end to say we're happy with this group operating our vehicles, using our equipment, using our firewall. But um it. But they're independent entities. They're volunteer groups that come together and say, we would like to operate the equipment. And so they're a separate entity. If I'm answering your.
Right. So I understand the separate, what I'm trying to do is bridge that with some thought, if not for discussion today, about a memorandum agreement, something that recognizes the independent, the legal status that they have. But also understanding that the money, that it could be a penny, it could be a million pennies. There seems to be a lot of money that we don't have eyes on.
Yeah.
Even on, you know, but even.
It's permitting the change. Got three new, I, I do know that there are three new wills for substantial funds that are going into a separate fund now, not controlled by the fire department. So that's going to begin changing. What happens? These are gifts that people typically give. But I think you, you could get if the fire department and the EMS have no objection to sharing that. It's just, we can't go in and say, we want to audit. The controller's office has opinions on that. It's not, they're not our entity. If they were employees and they had an account, we could.
So I'm not asking that we have the right to audit them. I'm suggesting that we have the right as to see the papers of any publicly registered entity. And understand what's going on. So, and I think we could also pass a local law about the use of of funds that these entities have too, you know.
You can't tell someone, if I were making a gift to someone and it's their gift or their entities give, we don't have, they, we have no more control over them, except we allow them to upgrade our equipment, Joe.
Right.
They're not us.
Right.
But if you, where I think you may have a, there may be a way, if you, if the fire department says, we don't have any problem showing you our books. And they want to sign an end, some kind of agreement for that, we're not forcing the audit. We, they're saying, yeah, we'll show you what we have. The one fund that they will have is the intern social fund.
Yes.
That's a state law that says that it's be used for social activities only. The other funds they can use, and they often do, purchase equipment. And then they have to dedicate it to us if they don't, not covered by our insurance. Nor do we have to, we don't have any control over it. And but they have to get their own insurance. They have to find their own place to house it. So they always dedicate the equipment back to the village. But you might want to try the idea to where you could bring this up at a meeting over there. And say, but would you, would there be any serious objection to just having an agreement? So as we make decisions, we know what funds may be available from other sources. I don't know how we'd spend their funds if they're not agreeable. But I guess we say, if you don't contribute X dollars, we're not going to put in wire.
Yeah, this is all about cooperation and collaboration. There's a lot of money and we.
Well, we don't know that.
Because if there is a lot of money involved.
Oh, there in terms of the chart. Yes.
Yeah. And a very important entity for the village, so. And maybe it's just alerting the public that that these gifts in honoring the service that was given really need to be less restricted. So that we can get.
That's kind of what the bar association recently had a meeting on this. That's where the idea that maybe we need an independent entity that's getting, getting them. So we're dealing with that. I know that clauses have been developed and it's begun to be circulated. So.
For the state committee attorneys. Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? If there are 501(c)(3), they have to file, right? A 990 or, I'm pulling this up right now and I mean, it's showing some numbers.
You see, I couldn't find it.
Really?
I thought the controller had a annual report. I would do a controller's night. So we can get.
You would look under the 990?
It is under, it is online with.
We have, we have those numbers.
Everybody in the world.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody said no. So.
You were asking if we could audit.
If we could audit them. File with New York State.
I, I misspoke then. All I ever wanted to see was what is on file with the controller. I took it myself, but it was unsuccessful. If it's there, then at least we know something about public health policy.
Yeah. Okay, we've already approved an accepted public safety committee. You can go forward with that. I would like to, just for the record, to point out that they did contribute 120,000 to the last equipment purchase. So we're very grateful to all our volunteers. Double day advisory committee, it did not meet in September, so there are no minutes there. Streets committee.
So there are a couple of action items for streets listed on your agenda, which I now seem to have misplaced. Okay. So much of what you will find behind the streets agenda relates to trees. We did our annual drive around and observed trees. There are three separate lists. One is work to be done by the village crew. This tends to be on smaller trees or things that are at a lower height that our, that our crew can handle independently. There is also a bid list, which is front and back. And then there is a one-sided list of planting spots. To the bid list, I would suggest, that was in your packet, based on conversations this morning at breakfast with the board. I would like to add two trees, which are both right here at our property at 22 Main Street on the front lawn that need to be trimmed.
Oh. They don't need to be removed? They're not dead?
They, they are not dead.
They're not dead.
They do need to be trimmed. So I will make a motion and then we can discuss further to approve the three lists, planting, village work list and bid list.
Motion made, seconded. All right. Any questions or discussions?
I, I am kind of curious how it's decided what, what trees get planted where.
What trees get planted where?
Hmm.
So there, there are three things that go into the equation. Maybe there are more than that. The first is that when we have taken down trees, we try to replace them. So for instance, you'll see on Brooklyn Avenue, there are plantings planned for 16 and 18. We took down two trees at 16, either two or three years ago. I would have to check my records, but we, we were, we removed substantial trees we tried to replace.
With the same kind of tree?
No.
Okay. So that was my question, how you decide what type of tree to replace?
Yeah. So in terms of what type, we have an urban forest management plan that helps guide the decisions. One of the things that you will not see on this list are maples because we are over mapled in our village. That's when, when we had our report done, they were like 46% maples. You need to be planting other things. So we, we do try to, you know, ensure that we have diversity within our urban forest. The other consideration that plays a huge part in this list is where the electric lines are.
The tree.
So the more ornamental, the plums, the cherries, the crab apples tend to go on the side of the street where they are under the lines and can be more easily trimmed.
Great. And when will these trees be planted? Will they?
I am hopeful they could. So there are two times to plant trees. You could either plant trees in the late fall after, as things are going into hibernation, or you can plant them in the spring, just as they are coming out. I would love to say this will happen in the fall. I know that Mitch has been having trouble.
This fall?
Yeah, in November, because we're doing this with grant funding. Mitch has been having trouble getting people to give estimates. So that.
For the trimming and cutting?
No, for the planting as well.
The planting as well.
Yes. So it would be wonderful to say that this would happen in November. We try to do it after Halloween, so we don't have holes open during the trick or treating season. But I don't want to promise that. It could be spring.
So it's interesting, if I'm reading the budget correctly, for streets, we have shade tree budget of about $45,000. And for parks, we have for those trees, we have about $4,000 if I'm at least for.
For the trimming and.
Chomping and trees and so forth. So.
The reason streets is so large is that we received a grant that is accounted for in that figure.
And it has to be expended on.
On street trees. So we actually, to continue with the where, we put forward these locations almost two years ago when we applied for this grant.
We didn't remember this is the grant. We didn't think we were.
We thought we were going to lose it.
Yeah. When it started talking about diversity of trees, we were worried that the.
But we got it. So, so these locations, I made a PowerPoint. We submitted it to DEC like two years ago. So we are a little behind on planting locations.
So that was made and seconded when then we began discussing, was it approved? Jenna?
Well, we are getting to the mid list. We haven't proven anything up. I think that's proving the mid list.
Okay. So are you saying, no, it was approved? All your.
Yes, not true planting.
Okay.
True approval, unless you did it all as one motion.
Oh.
I thought I did it all as one.
I thought she did too. So then it stopped. Perfect.
All right. So that is, that is trees. There is also in your packet, a sizable amount of paper related, as there always is, related to the Route 28 project. This concerns water, water line issues. And the, the very short story is that they will be doing work that affects our water lines and we need to grant them authority to do that.
Yes, a question about that. I noticed that there, it will be appropriate. But when we think about the capacity of that water line out there, whether we can do it better, I know we're saying, you know, that is called for this in terms of future development on that way. Is there any of you, you consider that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. It is a little tricky because this is outside of our municipal jurisdiction.
Right. But it's our, what have we done with water line? I mean, we have a penatory on water lines already.
We do.
And how we got the authority. Put that in. So that's our system that is responsible. And wouldn't it be wouldn't it be appropriate for us to manage our system if we think about it in a small form? Point out as a time to do the incremental cost of the slight merger pipe, which is why I'm thinking of the minimal.
I thought some of this work was the result of we're addressing the storm water coming off the hill and where. Can you double check that with Mitch? And where the lines were and the separation of the storm water and the water?
That, that is absolutely true. But what Joe's saying is if they're doing work on our water lines and they need to be increased in size now.
Then it may have been, you know, before, at an earlier point in the three years we've been working with New York State DOT on this, but double check with Mitch.
The reason I'm saying they are is because we've got these H2O3, the special note, other owner of the permits for water mains and the pertinent things. And so in that spec sheet, the hydrants, service connection material, water meter pits. So we have all this is in mind right now with this project. The, the water supply lines, not, not just going forward, if I'm reading it.
No, you, you're, you're reading it correctly. You are both correct in your assessment that it deals with our water, but it deals with our water because of the required separation from storm water.
And that's, we don't have any sewer infrastructure up here, do we?
I believe we did.
Yeah, we do. We call outside village.
Yes.
So storm water and wastewater segregation. Yeah, that's a big issue too. Okay.
It's actually three lines, if you think about it.
Yeah.
Water, storm and sewer.
Yep. So Mitch, in his text, says that there is no plan to increase in size. They just need to be moved to allow for the catch basins.
No, I guess that's what the volume is. I'm just wondering if we have thought about. You know, we're thinking about developing at some point that looks pretty out of, if the county saves its garage.
Oh, but that would be on the other side.
It's a, it's a different line altogether.
It would need to be on Linden, not on Chestnut.
I mean, if, if we stretch our imaginations a little bit, there could be ways to get water down there using, because it's flowing all the way to the street.
Right. But the, the, if that property were developed, the water would come in from Linden Avenue, not from Chestnut Street.
That's exactly where the service is now.
Right. And the question is, if could we do a workaround? I'm just trying to boost guidance. If we have to dig up the entire Linden Avenue to upgrade or expand the capacity, that's a huge cost, a developmental cost that is independent of this project. If we can connect up just a block away, a water line that eventually would be stuffed and then could.
I think more likely we would amp up there. And don't forget, it's not like our water lines are have strong limitations. We are putting in a potentially a 50 unit apartment building on Grove and Main. And the capacity of our water lines is more than adequate for that. So I, I think, you know, we can overthink this, but I, I do think that we have a system that has that capacity within it.
Okay.
All right. So is there a motion on this to have the mayor sign?
Yeah, I just want another type of way is that they're using the tier, the sheet.
That was, Jenna checked on that and about the, the situation. And he gave you, I thought, a response.
Yes.
It's just an example. You, we don't care that. That's kind of, it's giving you an example of how it's completed sort of thing.
Right. But this is what, these are our specs, you know? I mean, because all the other pages are the specs for follow up for this part. So I just.
What page are you on?
It's kind of complicated, but if you go to the start of this.
This?
I remember Jenna, you asked this and it says.
It's.
Example, it was just indicating if.
Yeah, it's just example.
She, Jenna checked on that when this document came.
As long as, yeah, we don't have a, it's up in space.
Yeah.
It's, looks like.
It's this and it says, I actually, did I write it or you Jenna example? It must be me. Yeah.
It's three of four.
Yeah.
One of two.
It's one and two are examples. Think of it that way. And Jenna confirmed that when these documents arrived. Right?
Sir, a motion, you have the mayor sign the rest of the.
I move to have the mayor sign this.
Audrey, a second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Two other things. And I will note that there's a discussion of a capital account that is under finance. The two other things are that we received a request concerning accessible parking spaces on Pioneer Street. We will discuss that further, but in case someone brings it up with anyone else. Part of the reason there are no accessible parking spaces near the Smithy, for instance, is the the steepness of the hill. And we do try to put accessible parking places where people who are using field conveyances can use it. But we, we'll have more discussion. I did talk to the person who submitted that. And I understand what the need is now better. So we'll see what we can do. The other thing I wanted to point out that isn't an action item concerns the trolley. And, you know, as is often the case, it seems like half of the street minutes are about the trolley. I think everyone is aware that the county has issued an RFP for new services for the Cooperstown Trolley. They also, that RFP also covers the OPT bus. They also, that R F P also covers the O P T bus. This is really critical for us, how this comes into play. Um, it seems likely that the responses that they get will show considerable increase in cost for trolley services. I mean, that seems almost a foregone conclusion. There is also at this point, no way aside from private donations for us to replenish our trolley fund. In the past, we replenished a trolley fund by selling trolleys that we own. But we don't own trolleys any longer. The county owns the trolleys, so we can't replenish our fund that way. Um, so I think in coming months, as we see the responses to this R F P, the village will be needing to have some some perhaps tough conversations with the county as to what our financial role can continue to be in the operation of the trolley system. Because this the trolley is funded through an enterprise fund. It is not taxpayer funded and so there is a discrete amount of money that can go to it and we operate the trolley at a loss.
I thought I read that there's a trolley that the county might dispose of and some of the funds from that
You know, we can, we um we can have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll it'll be up to the county.
Oh.
You know, if we get ten percent of a satisfied, I don't know how long that is staying us.
Yeah, it would probably be enough. So so I just want to make everyone who's here aware that there may need to be changes to how how the trolley works from a financial point of view. And we tried at this meeting to make Nicole, who is our county representative, aware of what our situation is.
Yep. I I saw, could the county just take it on?
I would that that I suggest that periodically.
Yes, I like that comment.
That was the last bullet, they're saying county is one of the the last.
Yeah.
Before we close, I should mention one thing about tree. Um, you know, sometimes in years, we have like two um tree plantings in memory of someone. Um, within the past year, we had an individual in our community, Hank Phillips, who passed away. And for decades and decades and decades, he ran one of the pharmacies in town with his pharmacy and actually was very well began in her car of all, I mean, many um events in our community. And chatting with the family, we would like to honor um Hank. And interestingly, we were looking at a location and from our tree planting list, I was somewhat suggesting, you know, maybe um at least a double day one, uh because we are replacing three trees there. But it's, they said, there's a very nice tree in front. Is that already dedicated? And I said, if you don't mind, yeah, for a already planted tree, we would love to get a sign board. So on the test, we've seen these ones that are little plates that go around the tree with a spring. And so maybe we could have that. We're looking, the date isn't finalized, um because we're trying to figure out the here, but it will be in October. And obviously planting time is critical for that because it's already planted in the
That's great. Are you talking about this October?
Excuse me?
This October?
Yes. Yeah, so probably, you know, toward the end of the month or so.
And if you're interested in what those plaques that the mayor is talking about look like, the Wallers have put one on their memorial tree in front of their house on Bieber.
You can walk around and see it. Though I will tell you, did you try that site they gave us the location to?
No.
It it's
It's gone?
I couldn't, it kind of says not this uh W W W is no longer, so so just double check it. That's why I lofted that one to you.
Yeah, happy to look into trees.
All right. All right, motion to accept streets committee um by Audrey, second by George, all in favor. Um, buildings committee.
This you may see was the one of the shortest uh committee meetings that I have ever been to in my entire life. In fact, I think I was thirty seconds late and I missed uh twenty percent of it.
Five minute meeting.
Um, I I do want to point out in addition to our discussion about the stairway um being refinished, that there has been work um ongoing in the historians room. And if you're upstairs, I encourage everyone to take you take a look at it. It's really looking like a fantastic space that's going to work well for the village.
What is that open on a regular basis, the historians room?
It it's not really the, it is the designated historians room at present. If the intention is that um it'll be opened by appointment.
Ah, okay.
But it's unlocked now if you want to go up.
Yes, because there's there's nothing in it. Oh, okay.
But we're looking forward to having it because um our vault is overcrowded with history material that's sort of been collected and thrown there. Um, so motion to accept buildings committee report by George, second by Joe, all in favor. We are at um finance and treasurers.
We have a consent agenda that's on your principal agenda. And that includes both financial personnel uh matters, and I would move the approval of that agenda.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
And now on our supplemental agenda, we have item um ten, uh which is a question for training by Griffin Hasek, um of ten eleven, a pay invoice from Miller's Cleaning Service, um an invoice from Bank Portal four, um an invoice uh from Flatlay Civil Construction Company. That's item thirteen and item fourteen is um I'm not sure what this item is, but I want to ask about it. The credit memo from the U S A people, is that just a subscription?
Um, we bought something from them, but Kathy said we don't normally buy a lot from them, but we have a credit memo, so she needed to get approval for us to accept the incredible four hundred fifty nine dollar. And it will be on hold, and so we purchase them in our company. The explanation I have to I don't know.
Okay, so is is that in the rule of getting the cash back?
Yes. I believe you'll have to check with Kathy. I I didn't understand it. She hasn't put for a few bucks.
Okay.
I don't know the credit memo. I don't know what happened, but it's four hundred ninety nine dollars that have for them that's being held, and so we purchase them.
You obviously must have expended something. Um, do you know what USA Blue Book to me, it's uh that's where you check a value of
Yes, the car.
Something.
Yes, and so it does show that it is a credit. I I see that on the but the question is if we use it so frequently, if we just want to get the money back as opposed to leaving it.
They they supply equipment for water and wastewater treatment plants.
So it may be that we use that more often than that.
Kathy, all she asked me to do was get the credit memo approved so that she could provide the
Okay. Fair enough. We also have item fifteen, which is invoice from Anchor P V A for our ninety plan. And um municipal finance officers' membership dues for our Gregor fifty cook. And the declaration um of use police equipment as and accessories of service. And so items ten to eighteen on our supplemental agenda, I would give the approval of all of them.
Second.
Second by Cindy, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Um, just to call our attention, if we if we're looking at that blue book invoice, you can see it comes from the G fund. So it was, it is a sewer purchase and it would just be their credit and I do believe they purchased from them.
And I want to call special attention to item sixteen, which is um a decision to accept the resignation letter from Kathy's, a deputy treasurer of the who had to speak, I've heard behalf as he's been a great colleague, is a member of the staff, very supportive, always uh has the answer, um I come to one people. I gasped when I saw her this item on the agenda, so I I will certainly miss her. I think we all know she's been a great asset to the village in my view.
So you've made the motion to accept her resignation letter. I'll second it, all in favor.
Aye.
Yes, you can see by the date it was handed this afternoon, um but it had been contemplated for a while. Um, so I will now make a motion to um publicly list the opening of the position for the deputy treasurer bookkeeper for the village of Cooperstown and to advertise that.
Second.
Second by, I heard Cindy, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we get everything on there then that was finance and personnel? I believe so.
Get money and funds.
Oh, right, we will go ahead and do the
And I suppose this, does this need to be um I don't think it does, but should it be considered by the water and sewer board? I don't think it's necessary.
Um, I think, isn't water and sewer aware that we have not had um that our chief, was that never announced there?
I'm not, I I'm sure the staff all knows. We as a board, we haven't discussed that.
Okay.
May not be, it may be that everyone understands that, but this you know, what, and um I guess this is something we should be discussing with the session.
Um, we certainly could. Um, just for background, so it is public information, we accepted the resignation of our chief wastewater treatment plant operator in, I believe it was June. And we have been trying consistently through various New York State sites to locate a chief um wastewater treatment plant operator. We've had zero applications. We've had discussions with D E C on that. And um we've even had discussions with other municipalities um on that. We approved Jarrett's leaving, um and it was in August at the time his um child was born. And then we approved his using his sick time to continue until October fifteen. The onus for a wastewater, chief wastewater treatment plant operator is they have to fill out all the online certifications for D E C and there's one in a community that does that and that in this case was Jared. He is completing all the paperwork until uh for the month of September. His last day is October fifteen. So essentially, we will need to have the October report completed um by a licensed operator and he's the one that has provided this. Again, um it's not a like full year commitment. This is essentially, we would ask that it begin on October um sixteen um and then carry for one month periods thereafter until we fill this position. Um, I don't know if there's any um thing further we can say on that. Um, we're continuing to offer, you know, to function because he has been there. We have um someone potentially who could come in, but it would be at the end of the year. So these are all discussions that are ongoing.
And so uh he would be a contract employee?
He's contracting. Yeah.
And and it's a month by month. That was my one.
Yeah, it's month by month. So if we did find someone who was, you know, fully certified, at any point, this ends.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, but so I I don't know if anything, I think that's all kind of public information. Um, all our acceptance of his um resignation, um when he would be leaving and we publicly announced um the use of the sick time. So we have not been able to get even one application for this position at this point.
Well, I'll I will move the approval of the contractual rate with like
Effective October
Sixteen.
Sixteen. All right, second by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you, Joe. That was a lot to get through. We got it all, right?
So. Well, with Jenna, I'm gonna move that.
All right. All right. So I have the only thing we have yet remaining on that are that the community environment, water and sewer, and going back on the one permit application. I just don't want to lose track of that.
Would you like me to give an update on that now?
Sure.
So I did um talk with with Janet. She said the sixth is possible but not great because the holiday show delivery is the next day, so they had intended to have all of the pedestals for that show in the squash court gallery.
Well, if it's
She did point out the ballroom would still be accessible by the elevator and by the fire escape.
Oh, but just not the stairs.
Just not the stairs.
The reverse.
Well, I I I guess if we this is a squeeze on all of us, I guess, but if we could use the space, the the gallery space, I I'd recommend we use a downstairs gallery.
I I think it's a bad idea. It's it's not a great space to begin with, and if there are pedestals, it's
Yeah.
And it's not accessible.
And it's not accessible.
The date can't be changed, can it, to the fifth?
Well, the thing is that this author lives in Jersey, she's booked here and there and they made this booking, so and this same thing happened, exact same thing happened last year, the exact same person, and it was really a loss to the community because a huge audience, or the the audience that would ordinarily be there ended up being about five or six people.
Be because it's a League of Women Voters event, I I'm happy to suggest other places that are in the village that can be advertised well in advance, but the League of Women Voters meets in a variety of different locations. It is often not in the ballroom, so
Right, but they had the whole, this, the publicity has always started on this. Uh, yeah, it's an unfortunate um missing, yes, because it walked left handed with the right hand is doing. I mean, I I if the League of Women Voters is not troubled by the accessibility question, I mean, we are talking about the steps down into the space.
I mean, they often have their events at the at the gym in the community room. I've been to League of
That's a great space and it's easy to set up.
Yeah.
And those rooms are, they have a meeting room too. They have the community room and meeting room. I've been with an organization that's met in both spaces.
Well, I mean, it's beyond our ability to, or authority to designate another location.
I would recommend they reach out because I guarantee they'd probably not have much issue for a date that's over almost a month and a half in from now. I think that's a great location, that community room. See if that is available on that evening.
Okay, well, um, so wha- what is if someone wants to make use of the, Janet says it can be made, so what would they do? They send them the pedestals at one end of the room and could we set up, could we set up chairs down there or could the league set up chairs down there?
I'm going to repeat, Joe, I think it's a really bad idea. It is a bad space for this type of event to begin with. And we're talking about moving a hundred chairs down the elevator, making a makeshift A V setup because there isn't A V in that room. And then moving pedestals to an end of the room. It's just, it's not it it is, I would say, more embarrassing than moving someone. It 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 has a lot of problems to it. And I apologize. If we hadn't been trying to get this guy to do the stairs literally for months, there could be a differing.
And if there's any line, we're just a question of how we become applications.
All I'm gonna say is I was not here last week, in and last week, so I would have been able to, because I was working on the calendar, discussing the dates for the floor. I would suggest in the future, don't advertise an event until it's been approved on board. That's why I bring that here. So, you know, discussions like this happen now. So I just feel like it was last minute, it was last week. I'm sorry she's already booked and I'm sorry. I apologize for not being in the calendar.
No, no, it's not. It's not an apology. There's no recrimination. It's just when. Or because this probably won't be repeated in other ways. If people can get on the calendar with an asterisk pending approval, at least they won't be double booking of applications, right? Is that a useful thought?
Yeah, no, the floor could have gone on the calendar.
And the floor was booked in August.
It was. I mean, and it, no, I should say, it has been in the packet before today.
And I don't know if the dates have finalized. That was my.
This is also one of the, okay.
Yeah. I think we provided a potentially good location though. I really do. So moving forward.
Lead to sort through.
Yes.
Okay.
So is someone gonna make the?
You mean, we're gonna deny it? I just, I would say we aren't approving it.
If you want a motion, I will vote not. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll vote, I will make a motion not to approve the event on November 6th by the League of Women Voters due to building construction.
Second by Audrey on favor? All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. We are at a little update on grants and projects. Our next Welcome Home Cooperstown will be Tuesday, October 7. October is fire prevention month, so they're talking to the fire department and they may have a piece of equipment out in front, which is always fun for everyone to sort of get an inside look. Music will be by Mike Bauer and Linda Flynn. But via her business is providing refreshments. I do know the League of Women Voters will also be present. Martha Membrino and there's another member who will be there as well. New York Forward. You won't believe this. We received the contract signed by the Department of State. We thought we could easily be into the end of October. So we've got all that in hand at the moment. And it basically just arrived, and so we'll look at it over. But I know we're kind of eager to move forward on some of those projects. Yep. Cooperstown INI Study, the DEC, you know, made comments on the engineering plan that the engineers, Delaware engineers submitted. They sent back their responses and when DEC says, okay, this is a final plan, then we'll be able to submit for our balance of the grant, which would be $25,000. And we would be able to get reimbursed for that. What am I looking at? Round 9 Restore New York, as has been reported previously, we have our million dollar Restore New York grant for the demolition of 217 Main. Vassino's HCR application was due in early September and was submitted in advance of that date. And so hopefully it'll be a successful application and they'll be able to close officially on the property in the spring. Is there anything on Willowbrook in our?
Nothing, nothing further on Willowbrook.
All right. Project Ferry Spring, Cindy and I met with two representatives of the Friends of Park who are moving forward with their fundraising and just wanted a you know, to know. And essentially, nothing has changed. We will not know probably till late November or potentially December if the state will allow the location change and therefore that portion of the grant. I do know in parks, and I'll let you bring it up there, there is a motion to there's a potential to have a motion to at least move the funds that the village dedicated. The basic idea is, as was discussed numerous times at this board, the New York State would not let us do the caretaker's quarters or kind of the dock that we were looking at. The only thing they would allow us to consider was the pavilion, which was the relocation of the road to the east side. The construction of a ramp up on the lake side to provide ADA access to the building. And interestingly, at least the village got involved in it because the Friends is overjoyed by the plans that we kind of developed. Because if you recall, at one point, they had a looping back and forth ramp to get into the building. And we worked to devise, you know, begin it at a slightly different location. It comes in much closer to the south end of the building on the east, on the west side. And will allow, are you ready, a 46-foot platform in front of that building. So really an optimal viewing platform. It also, we submitted for the installation of an ADA bathroom in there. So if the state says no, then the idea is that the Friends will move with that. Because we did know that with with being a municipality and doing bidding and prevailing wage, et cetera, the costs would have gone up, but they could have been covered potentially by our grant and what we have budgeted. But alone, we would not have those funds. So then we can essentially shift our funds to install ADA ramp and ADA compliant bathroom in the caretaker's quarters, construct a shower bathroom for the caretaker, and improve one space at the south end of the caretaker's building that would be used for lifeguards. So all good plans, something will go forward. And I think together, it's really great working in this public-private partnership. And hopefully we get the grant. If not, we have a way forward.
Thanks. Great to hear.
Anything to report on? Achieving, we didn't go for one, did we?
No, we didn't go for bricks.
We didn't go.
So Achieve, I was just looking, the next meeting of the Mohawk Valley Regional Economic Development Council is this Thursday, at which time their consultant is talking about Achieve. I have not heard anything, which doesn't make me especially hopeful that they will include it in their list of projects. But we may know more after Thursday.
All right. Thank you.
And that application, I think I reviewed that, right? That's the one for double day fee?
Yeah.
9E Plan, I just leave these on here so we keep them in our radar. I have very exciting news about our Appalachian Regional Commission. Again, that was a 50-50. We obviously. And the beauty of that particular grant is we could match it with our Department of State LWRP because one was state and one was federal. And so we did complete the final report for the ARC. It had a one-year period, but we had into August. And we did complete it in August and then kind of had our fingers crossed. But we have been notified that the wire transfer for the final amount of our $125,000 and that amount on the final payment will be $36,203.53. And we have closed out that grant. So very exciting. But what's your question?
So in the watershed minutes, which I realize none of us created, it says we gave a lot back. And I don't believe that to be accurate.
No, I thought, I saw that too.
I wondered what the confusion was. And again, I know nobody here could answer it, but maybe it's important to let the watershed supervisory committee know that we did not leave a lot of money on the table.
Yeah, I saw that too.
It's on page three. It says all funds approved were submitted and much has been returned. And maybe that meant that they have returned money to us. Maybe I was misreading it, but I read it as we had returned money.
No, no, I think what they were saying, so essentially, as I say, we completed all the reports. We filed four reports with them. The first time, we did not submit for any funding reimbursement. On reports two, three, and four, we did. We submitted, I'll say, it was like $32,000 one time, $50-some thousand on the other. And this final one was 36, and all totaling $125,000 even. So I think that's what they must be referring to. And much of what has been recharged to the village. We spent $125,000 has been returned. I think that's the gist of that.
That's fantastic. I just wanted to confirm.
Oh, you were worried that we'd lost our grant? Nope, we closed that puppy out.
Well, that's what I thought had happened, so I just wanted to confirm.
All right. I think that is all for update on that. Moving on to board reports, Parks Board.
So the Parks Board met earlier this month and the parks are of course closed. We did look at the tickets that came in and noticed that Ferry Spring, the dollar mountains down. And I think it's due to perhaps caretakers not probably collecting as much as they could. So we want to make sure that next year we have some vigorous training and make sure that people are paying the fees to come in. The Lakefront Park Concert Series, as we all think you know, was a great success this year. We averaged about 318 people at each concert. We were very lucky with the weather. The face painter is probably not going to be something that we engage with again for next year. I mean, I think there was some interest in.
Into the face painter?
Well, the face painter was, I think, popular when it was free, when it was supported. I think there just wasn't enough interest to pay for it going forward. What it cost?
Yeah, was it per child? It was.
I think it was per child and dependent upon what you asked for. I don't know the specifics, so I can't.
And there were a couple of times where the face painter, due to health or other conflict, wasn't there either in my recollection.
Well, that could be.
I do think it's a popular, popular thing. Because I think I mentioned before, you know, I love those concerts and I went with daughters and grandchildren. And they probably painted the faces of 30 to 35 kids that night. It was so impressive. So I do think, I don't know if it's something we want to think about, like just paying a face painter to come once or twice during the season, because I think it's really popular with the families and it's a nice benefit.
I do think that the opening concert, I think, which is the one we paid for, there was a lot of activity. So yes, I mean, if we're willing to pay a face painter to come to a few of the concerts that we target.
To or something like that.
That might be an opportunity.
The ones that the kids might be more.
Yes.
Parents.
Something fringe.
Would they fund it? I don't know. I mean, we could ask them, but.
What's your question?
I don't remember. I'm sorry. Yeah. All right. So you've already touched on Friends of the Park. Susie Knight came and she did thank John for all the work that was done on various parks in response to some of the things that they saw that weren't taken care of the way they should have been. And I think we did mention at the last meeting that we're going to talk to SUNY Oneonta's volunteer office to have a spring cleanup at our park. So we need to be cognizant of when it's time to request that through SUNY Oneonta. But in any case, Sue, Susie presented Plan A, B, and C, trying to figure out what they could count on. And yes, we did make a motion to request that the village commit the $225,000 for the Ferry Spring.
I'm fine with our committing because, you know, I double-checked the budget and the reserve. The amount is not $225,000, not that it matters terribly, but it's coming from Parks, that Parks line. And if you look through budgets, there are other expenses coming from that Parks line.
Much of it?
It was $224,477 was the amount we set aside to match that same amount from New York State.
Okay, you said $224,477.
Okay. Yeah, and I'd be glad to make the motion that we commit. Should the New York State Parks Grant not be approved for the Ferry Spring project, that the Village of Cooperstown commit its budgeted 50% match of $224,477 to improvements at Ferry Spring.
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And that is, yes, Parks.
I have one question. And that contains the mural, which is.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I shopped her.
But obviously, the faces Badger Park. I will point out, this probably predates you. There was a mural done on the chamber. And obviously, that's their building that they contracted. But before, it is facing our double day power line, et cetera. And it's pretty big imagery. We did provide a little feedback on the imagery and got, I thought, some very good feedback that created a better mural for our community. I would hope that, you know, the Friends seem to be leading the charge on this, but I think it's important that we see the design that's going to go up facing Badger Park.
I think they also need price chopper's permission.
Yes, I think that is, that is the big, yes, that's the first hurdle. But I will say, I don't know if you're familiar with this artist's work, but it is really beautiful. You know, I think that we did talk about, it is beautiful. In fact, we have three of.
There's no names, so I couldn't.
Oh, it's James. I can't remember his last name, but you will see his work throughout Oneonta. And we have three of his murals in the art gallery in SUNY Oneonta. And he usually does animals. We would probably hope that and talk to him about not putting things like dragons on there or, you know, something a little bit more compatible with the park and the region. But I think, yeah. Well, they might like that, but.
I do think the imagery does. To just pass some review.
Okay. Great. Pass that along, yes.
Just while we're on Prox, the other thing I'd like to bring up is, and we discussed it earlier, is the tree maintenance issue. We have just this morning, you know, concern expressed about trees that are. We have just this morning, you know, concern expressed about trees that are in good shape and hurt people. Um, but there, I mean, our parkland coverage is very. Both are a big part of the. The the council dog park is a little. I'm most concerned about because of the the physical experience of that park could be greatly enhanced and relatively small. And doesn't.
And and I know it's not on our list, so I don't.
Right.
It is the same way, but we but we did talk about it.
As you found out there, that really you were dated training?
No, 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 we we. We uh we took Joe's comment seriously and that. I mean, it's not on the list because it it's different.
Street tree, yes, right.
Yeah.
But again, it would become, because this was the streets excluded.
Yeah.
The street trees, I want to bring it up in the parks, because I, as I said, the arts project for trees is miniscule.
Mm hmm.
And it doesn't have to eat what the streets budget is by any stretch, but I think a few more thousand dollars would be all right. Uh, hooking up. And may and getting rid of some.
I will I will remind Mitch that that needs to. Part of the bid as well.
And there was a, I don't know if you noticed it, but I thought about it, but there was a remark made in some report that something. It's such a lot, but those strokes and that would. She opened away from everything, you know, almost important, but it seemed to me was unnecessarily expensive to go to. Or shame to you, best thing.
I think it's safety related.
Mm hmm.
My my comments, um, and I don't know whether the village is doing the survey or Friends of the Parks is doing the survey. But I just wanted to share our experience with Survey Survey Monkey.
Yes.
Survey Monkey really limits, if you're using the free Survey Monkey account. It limits the number of questions that you can ask. And as we discovered when we updated our comprehensive plan, it also limits the number of responses that you can receive.
Yeah.
There will not be enough free responses. So if they're going.
That is good to know, yeah.
They're going to use Survey Monkey, they're going to have to pay for the account.
Okay.
Um, which is fine, I suppose, but but if they're going to pay for the account, they may want to look at other.
Yeah.
Other providers. Because uh it cut us off a little bit under a hundred, and I think the hope is that you would get more than a hundred responses.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
And you know, we really could, because we have, you know, a Facebook account. We could put the survey on our website, on our Facebook page. There are ways to um circulate it and get a good response. But Cindy's right, we could uh, they were almost like yes or no, or it was not very easy to do.
Yeah, no, that is good to know, and we haven't really finalized the survey yet. We've sort of looked at it again, but. Um, and we did talk about um maybe including a link um in the um village newsletter.
Yeah, I I would also strongly disagree with a survey is a good place to allow people to vent. I I don't think that that is the.
That's that may be what you get, though. We have open, open-ended questions, so.
Open-ended questions are fine, but if the goal is to is preventing, that's not a great idea, so everybody's.
Anything else? Any other questions, comments on Parks Board motion to accept the Parks Board report? By George, second by Audrey, all in favor?
All right.
All right, moving on, um watershed, or I'm sorry, water.
Water. To the environment.
Yes, I missed you, didn't I? Community.
Taking surveys. In case you didn't know, there are two very important surveys going on right now. Um, one concerns our watershed. And the other, for those of us who are Town of Atsigo residents, concerns the update to the Town of Atsigo's uh comprehensive plan. So if either of those are of interest to you, the deadline is coming up. Um, please fill them out and provide your input for those. The other thing that I wanted to do, because it hasn't come up yet tonight, um is to remind you that the annual community dinner that takes place on Main Street is this Sunday. The village participates by providing our street.
And um, don't we do some other things? Are we involved in trash? I can't remember. Is that all handled by?
I think that's handled by.
Okay, because I know we do a great job of recycling.
We do.
Make sure we get pictures.
Yes, I'm gonna bring my camera to compost and recycle.
Um, we we actually are very good at that uh Welcome Home Cooperstown. But I realize it was very interesting. The last time I had to leave like around seven o'clock. And I've been standing right by the containers. We had like a bin full of compostable recyclable material. We were we're so fortunate that we get that um community element provided. We had like no trash, we had a bag for the recycling, et cetera. I left and unfortunately, the recycling bin went in and our janitor dumped it in the trash. And then we couldn't find it. And it was rather mortifying, and so with that, we instituted a full-scale search. So I will, it was finally located in the janitor's space. So we and um I confessed all this to the people who drop it off, who are so wonderful. And they laughed and they said, there is such a learning curve. They are actually trying to do recycling at the elementary school. And every day is like a new problem. It's just so funny, a new issue with it, but it'll work. So um if you're at it, um, please make sure, you know, we could all take turns standing by the recycling bins. Uh, we use compostable, you know, clear plastic or clear uh corn-based cups. So you know, our materials are very ecologically sound. So I have the picture.
We have to submit the picture to N V I D.
Yes. All right, so. Thank you. Um, do we accept community environment?
I.
Motion to accept community environment by Audrey, second by George, all in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to water and sewer board.
There is um no action item uh in the. That was brought up in our minutes um.
Yeah.
And no particular issues. I did give a briefing on the um watershed uh supervisor committee in the historic role of the water commissioner. Just to order people's welcome going there. Um, but we do have now the fucking under package of that somebody. Including going to uh the Walers uh about.
And I have information on that. Um, so that you will find all those papers in your additional agenda.
I was out, oh, probably a month ago, you know, I was except for that, I was out of that, I was visiting with them. And they showed me what it's going, this is the first I see of them documenting um the matter they thought to Tom. A lot of the manager. And so I think this is now where he is.
Yes.
I don't know how much time we want to spend on time if you have to do a report, but maybe this should be taken up in the water soon.
Well, I guess it's already come, it's been seen at several levels. I want to give you some background and then you can decide if you want a delay on it. And and have it go through till next month's meeting before a decision would be made. Um, so you've read the letter and uh there was um. Information on it, there was plans. This picture is actually one that came. It wasn't provided by the Walers, because I wanted to better understand. The layout and what was going on here. And there are a couple of the statements appear to be. Um, maybe perception, but the um I'll tell you how the village handled this. Um, so on July twenty fifth, there was a water leak. And it was essentially, if you look at your Google picture, you see where that like little white spot is? That is where the leak was. Um, this property is located in Bowers Town, County Route fifty two. It um erupted and was noticed. It was a water main break, and so it was our line. It flooded the driveway. You see, if you follow that white spot, you can see how the driveway goes in there. Um, it did flood that. Um, so the the crew went out and um when they did. They repaired the main and they delivered um one load of stone to replace the stone. That had been washed away in that driveway on that side of the house. Uh, while, excuse me, Mitch was there. Um, the owner asked that more stone be delivered in order to. Fill in the circular driveway and the long driveway that is essentially on slightly the other side of that sign. And goes to the back of the house. These areas were not affected by the water main break. And so um the owner was told. Um, if he wanted additional loads, the time to do it was to contract separately with Chris Satriano. Who did the um gravel on the other part. Um, and when while he was there, putting the gravel down on the village side, and that is what happened. Um, so the, I will say that our D P W department does not feel those areas were affected by the water. And therefore, those loads of stone were involved. Uh, he also, um, there was. A complaint that the village didn't respond. Actually, the village was aware of it. We did respond. We have a contractor. And uh who never initially answered his phone that we were trying to work with. You know, who had the equipment to dig and deliver stone, et cetera. So the village immediately called um Chris Satriano on the list. Um, and Tom or Quentin said, we can't, we don't have phone number for him. Could you give it to us? And Chris replied, um, I've already called him and taken care of it. So Chris was aware of the situation because our crew was trying to contact the owner and address the situation. Uh, they had, they asked for the phone number, but it it that phone call had already been made. Partly because that individual cares for their properties and was already, you know. Um, he's a client, the uh the owner's a client. Um, so I think, you know, you're welcome to take it, but I think it's important to paint the full picture on this.
Yeah, I I do too. One of the things that. Uh, when I talked to the the explanation I got or the description I got was that the gravel. Was washing it down the slope on the property, all accumulated at the bottom. And so I don't know if it was a question of just adding gravel or respreting gravel. But there were, Tom, uh, the our water plant operator, it, you know, had eyes on this too. I I just think it. Um. I'd like to get uh without taking a hard time tonight, I'd like to get a broader discussion with the staff people who are on the site.
Perfect.
I just think it would be.
All right, we will refer it to that and uh.
And 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 that seems to, if if the property owner wants to come in and speak to the board about it too, I just think we fully hear it. And report something on recognition.
Yep, perfect. Um, so the only other um thing on uh water and sewer. Um, I will ask for a motion to appoint Bruce McLeish as the first alternate on um water and sewer board. Um, motion by um approving by George, second by Audrey, all in favor?
All right.
Um, you know, we work hard to fill all our all our all our.
That's the only vacancy we now have would be a second alternate on waters.
So if any of you have any potential suggestions for that? That would be appreciated. But I didn't know if they did get five people last night, so they have maybe. Have five attendants. Um. Watershed Supervisory Committee Minutes. And I know we did discuss one point on that. Is there any other comment or? Minutes?
No.
The one, the only thing I was, we had discussions about the. This relates to the, well, we could, uh, review. Uh, and the mention of the Clark phone as being inserted in. I mean, all of those, we need so much information and perceive in an ordinary fashion to deal with some of them. Issues and siltation of the lake. So um getting. That uh that for engineers study, that I think is going to be helpful to the water and the water.
I think it will be largely dependent on whether there is a federal government.
Hmm.
When we get it, I mean.
Is that something that's, uh, they're doing paperwork now that goes to the.
Yep.
Great.
Nice.
Um. And um I am, will be looking for a new um member for the watershed supervisory committee. The Village Cooperstown has two appointees and one of them, Jim Howard, who has served remarkably well. He wears numerous hats and of course is head of um Atsigo Lake Association, has just. Been an incredible asset on that board. Um, but he does um. Go south for several months, so he will be resigning effective November first. So at the October meeting, I will propose a replacement. Um, we have breakfast with the board Monday, October twenty seventh uh from eight to nine. And Board of Trustee meeting Monday, October twenty seventh at six P M. If uh there's no other um business before the board. I've missed anything, I will um. Make a motion to move to executive session to discuss the work history of um and personnel issues.
Second?
Second by Joe. Thank you.
So, Alan? So, Alan?
We should probably open the door just so it's legitimate.
Okay.
Erin.
Should we?
Yeah, it is. But I don't think so, but.
No. All right. I move that we approve the equation of just Officer Jess Blonsa to be Officer in Charge at a out of title pay increase of $2 an hour for 40 hours a week.
Second.
Second by Cindy. All in favor? I move that James Kelman be reimbursed up to 10 hours per week as for out of title at $2 an hour additional when not serving with an officer in charge.
Second.
In a second.
That's that's her third one.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the officer in charge must prioritize coverage of weekends and evening hours.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait.
I'm not sure what this in staffing or the individual officer in charge or the officer in charge setting schedule.
The primary officer in charge.
Oh, in terms of setting schedules, though, you don't mean that the officer in charge has to to cover those times, but instead should ensure that they are covered by scheduling.
But provides schedule coverage.
Yeah.
That you'll put that work in there. All right. So motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve advertising for a full time police officer position. By move second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
And Cindy, you have the wording there?
Yes. Should I use the individual's name?
Excuse me?
Should I use the individual's name?
Oh, you will. No.
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 Um, in I move that in regard to the matter of health insurance following retirement, that we honor the terms of the contract in effect at the time of retirement and the village policies developed to support the same.
The second by Audrey. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Motion to adjourn. Adjourned. Thank you. I didn't think that would take that long. Sorry.